Hammer, are you good?
My clock's playing.
I call the order of this regular meeting of the Monument Board of Trustees, October 1st, 2018. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, with one mission, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Vanenhove, would you take a role, please?
Mayor Wilson?
Here.
Trusty Clerk?
Here.
Trusty Stevens?
Here.
Trusty Bornstein?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Elliott?
Here.
Trusty Koopman?
Here.
For us, we have a consent agenda and an agenda. Do we have any modifications? Or do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda and the agenda?
I'd like to make the motion to approve the consent agenda and the agenda.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Second? We have a motion, a second. Ms. Vanenhove.
Trusty Stevens?
Yes.
Trusty Koopman?
Yes.
Trusty Bornstein?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Trusty Clerk?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Elliott?
Yes.
First item on the agenda, Resolution Number 28-2018, a resolution appointing regular and alternate members to the Planning Commission. Ms. Jones?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. Planning staff has brought for you a resolution to appoint some new members to the Planning Commission. There are currently two vacancies, as well as a number of terms that are expiring at the end of the year. So, we have brought the applicants and outlined those appointments in the board memo of when those would be effective, outlining a couple new regular members, as well as alternates. Per your request, a number of the applicants are here tonight. Mr. DiMarco did contact me today and let me know that due to an issue, due to a medical issue, he wasn't able to be here, but he regretted that absence, but did want to let you know that he was still interested in being appointed. And so, like I said, those folks are all here, with the exception of, as I mentioned, Mr. DiMarco, and I don't believe Ms. Strop.
Okay.
If you have any questions for staff or the applicants.
Does the board have any questions for Ms. Jones? Does the board have any questions for any of the applicants that are here? Seeing none. I'll bring it back to the board for a motion. Going once?
All right, I got it. Resolution Number 28, dash 2018, a resolution appointing regular and alternate members to the Planning Commission.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion, a second. Ms. Vanenhove.
Trusty Koopman?
Yes.
Trusty Bornstein?
Yes.
Trusty Stevens?
Yes.
Trusty Clerk?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes. That motion passes six-zero. Next item on the agenda, Ordinance Number 19-2018, an ordinance approving the final plat of Sanctuary Point filing number four.
Good evening again. So, the first public hearing item for you tonight is a final plat in Sanctuary Point. This is ordinance 19, known as Project DA 11, 2018, and this is filing number four. So, just as a reminder to everyone, the area that we're speaking about, Sanctuary Point is on the far eastern edge of the town. You can see Baptist Road is on the bottom of this slide as a reference point. So, filing four is the first filing before you in Phase Two, and it includes that area with the lines, or the hatch lines, and it also includes all Sanctuary Rim Drive to the western boundary of the property. It's a little over eighty-nine acres. Again, this is in Phase Two. The final PD site plan for Phase Two was approved by this board back in March. Everything with this plat is consistent with that final PD site plan that has been approved. This is simply the actual plating, which creates the actual lot lines. It includes one hundred and five lots, fifteen tracks, those are provided pieces, right, drainage, open space easements, those types of things. And as I mentioned, it also includes all of Sanctuary Rim Drive. All the standards are met. Again, it's consistent with the PD site plan, and there seems to be no real issues. Just as a reminder, this is an illustration of all Sanctuary Point. The area we're speaking about is Phase Two, which is shown in the middle here. And again, filing four is on the south side of Sanctuary Rim Drive and including Sanctuary Rim Drive. So, you all might remember from the final PD site plan discussion back earlier this year, there were a condition placed on there that had to do with the connection of Sanctuary Rim Drive to Glen Eagle Drive. So, that condition, the limit was on land use permits. So, I just wanted to clarify that it actually has nothing to do with plating. Plating is the step that would come before land use permits, which is what an applicant needs to get a building permit. And in fact, you may actually see other plats before that connection is finished in terms of construction, and that is still consistent with the condition. The limit will be on the land use permits that are actually issued. So, this was heard before your Planning Commission in September. There was only a few questions and discussion with the Planning Commission. One member of the public did speak to ask a question, and essentially that was to clarify again that this was not changing anything from the approved PD site plan, that this was fully consistent with the PD site plan, it's just, again, sort of that next step, the plating step. And the Planning Commission did recommend approval with a four zero. The Planning Commission recommends approval, as I just mentioned. And staff is available for any questions.
Do we have any questions for Stevens? Okay. Is the applicant here?
Yes, the applicant is here.
More than the classical, if you have a question.
Does the board have any questions for the applicant? Seeing none. This is a public hearing item, so I will open it up to the public. Do we have anyone from the public that would like to speak for this ordinance? Seeing none. Do we have anybody that would like to speak against this ordinance? I'll bring it back to the board now for a motion.
Motion for ordinance number 192018, an ordinance approving plat of, final plat of Sanctuary Point filing number four.
A motion, a second. Ms. Vanenhove.
Trusty Bornstein?
Yes.
Trusty Clerk?
Yes.
Trusty Koopman?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Elliott?
Yes.
Trusty Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Motion passes six-zero. Next item on the agenda, Ordinance Number 20-dash-one, or dash 2018, an ordinance approving the annexation property known as Willow Springs Number One.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Board Trustees. Welcome to October. Hopefully Rocktober. No offense to the rest of you fans. Tonight, I'm here to present a request for annexation, which comes along with an agreement, an annexation and development agreement, and also a zoning and a sketch plan, since the zoning will be planned development. Start with the, hopefully, the site. The site's located at the end of Mitchell, the south end, north of Forest Lakes Drive, which is the western extension of Baptist. It's west of the railroad, and generally speaking, a pretty large 216-acre parcel. Little bit about annexations, which you may have to recall already, because the board has seen this. Annexations require a couple things to be established, and that was resolutions that the board has already passed. One is contiguit, excuse me, contiguity. You'll see here, and this is going to be two sequential annexations. The one on the north, Willow Springs One, you can see the yellow where it has the one-sixth contiguity around its perimeter, and one sits annexed and annexed mistaken on number two. The border between the two, which is dashed, becomes a one-sixth contiguity. There's also a requirement that there be a community of interest. The contiguity itself qualifies for that. However, I think we can see that people here will shop in Monument, they will socialize and recreate in Monument as well. So, again, these have been found to exist by the board previously via resolution. So, let's start with the sketch plan and zoning. The zoning is planned to be planned development, which requires the sketch plan be approved at the same time. The proposed sketch plan indicates a range of densities from three to ten single-family units per acre. In the PD zone, after the sketch plan is approved, a preliminary site plan and final site plan must be approved by the development. These site plans will include all the details, such as lot layout, utilities, and drainage facilities. And here's a quick look at the plan. You can see in the colors, it's a range of density, as well as a considerable amount of open space in the green. And I will describe some of the other features as we move on. Wanted to note that it's called the Monument Creek Ranch, so you're dealing with the Willow Springs Annexation Two sequentially, one or two, and the sketch plan itself is called Monument Creek Ranch. Streets. There will be a collector street running down the middle, where there will be the extension of actually Synthes, after you come down to Mitchell and turn over onto Synthes through that industrial development. This particular route extended south to Forest Lakes Drive will then provide a little relief, definitely for downtown, for anybody going south, they won't have to travel down Second Street, and for the Synthes industrial complex as well. All of those, three shifts, I think, a day, will have an option to come from the south when the road is finally in place. This will require a bridge, be built on Monument Creek, and I'll talk about that more later when we get into the details of the annexation agreement. This is a diagram of the road system, I-25 on the right, Mitchell on the left, showing in dash lines the segment that would be completed by this development when it is, the road is complete. And what it provides is for everybody living west and working west of the railroad, that alternative to go south to get I-25. So, this has little red spots showing the approximate bridge location. Again, it shows that spine road coming down from the end of Synthes to Forest Lakes. All the little arrows along there, I'll show you what will serve the residential areas as it branches off and comes back to the collector road. Again, here's the route that would be taken. The project itself is to the south, and you can see it coming south from Second on Mitchell, but turn onto Synthes right into that collector road in the project itself. Little bit about water and sewer. Sewer service will be by Monument Sanitation. This is already included in the Monument, excuse me, Monument Sanitation District. Water service will be provided by the Town of Monument. There's an existing main at the end of Synthes that will be connected to, and it will be looped once it gets to the south end, so we don't just have a one-way system going into this development. There will be a fee assessed, the water development fee, as well as TAP fees when the homes are built. The comprehensive plan does designate this area as to be annexed on the annexation and urban growth map. It also conceptually shows the area as residential attached, single-family attached, and open space, which I think you'll find is what the plan is proposing. Plan again. So, let's talk a little bit about the annexation agreement itself, which is a contract really with what, between the developer and the board, that specifies responsibilities, obligations, other promises might be made on both sides. All the streets will be built and paid for by the developer to town standards. After that, we'll accept them, and they'll be maintained by the Town of Monument. The main north-south street will be a minor residential collector with a sixty-foot wide right-of-way. No lots will front directly onto this road. Local streets will then, as I mentioned, branch off of that spine road and circle back to get all the lots collected onto the main road. The bridge will span Monument Creek, paid for by developer. The town will contribute traffic impact fees, collected at the time of land use permit for the homes, and contribute that to the cost of the bridge, as we see benefits I previously mentioned, with downtown relief and other people being able to go south. Synthes and the Lake of Rockies residential area, for example. The trade before the bridge construction will be when the intersection at Mitchell and Second becomes Level of Service E, which is a traffic engineering defined level of service, essentially meaning that once somebody has to wait over thirty-five seconds to get through the intersection from any direction, that's when the bridge gets built. It's very possible it will restap before anybody builds on the north side of the development itself, but that'll be devolved in the final PD site plan when we see the traffic report. Another diagram, kind of emphasizing that. You can see Second Street over to Mitchell, where that intersection, as you can see, begins and old Denver intersects Second. The extension of this with the bridge and the development on the south and the north end of Willow Springs, Monument Creek Ranch, separated by that area. So, basically, the development will start in the south, and at the point, whether it's before or upon ten homes being built on the north, the bridge will be built when the intersection at Second Mitchell reaches that particular traffic level. Water, again, that will be from Town of Monument. All the system will be installed and paid for by the developer, and then eventually taken over by the town. Extend that main from the end of Synthes, all the way down to Baptist, and find the best route that we can decide upon to connect that into another part of our water system or a looped system. The developer will pay a water development fee of $531 and $760, and then TAP fees at the time of building permit. All the rights will be due to the town. Parks and school dedication. There's a requirement of 5.6 acres of parkland to be dedicated to the town. No publicly maintained parks are planned in this development, but several neighborhood parks are a part of the sketch plan. The town will offset fifty percent of the fees in lieu of land dedication for the abundant open space that will be left, as you saw in the sketch plan. That will leave a park fee for each unit at that point of $559, will be collected at the time of building permit of the homes. 6.2 acres is required for school district. The developer will dedicate five acres to the southeast, southwest corner of the property, and then the, which is not a part of this annexation, remain county. And then the balance will be collected at the time of building permit, which will be about $240 per home. In conclusion, the Board of Trustees has determined that the site is eligible for annexation under state law. The annexation agreement has been drafted for the board's consideration that identifies the obligations of the developer and a town that is equitable. The annexation, zoning, and sketch plan are in accordance with the comprehensive plan. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the request. Any questions at this time?
Questions for Ms. Manning?
Could you please explain the traffic impact fees and what that equates to in a dollar amount?
It's going to equate to about $250,000 by the time all the homes are built.
So, that would be the completion of, I think, five hundred and, whatever that number was?
Four hundred homes, you mean?
Okay.
Yes, that's about what that would end up being.
Okay. And then, my other question, and Mr. Tharnish might be able to answer this, currently, where are we at as far as number on our TAP fees for new development on homes?
Cost of TAP fee?
Yes, yes, please.
We're at about $15,000.
Thank you, Tom.
TAP fees for 2018 for three-quarter are $17,000, or 2019, it jumps to $19,400. That's on a five-year schedule that the board approved back in September 2016.
Thank you. And then, my last question regarding traffic studies. Will new traffic studies be initiated? I know in the past, these have been outdated reports that have been, I don't want to use the word manipulated, but kind of tweaked and molded to accommodate. How would that be addressed?
What you mentioned is fairly typical. In this case, we've got a large parcel that involves several streets and intersections. From a perspective, will be all encompassing and on its own alone. It's my intent to make sure that they study the Synthes pattern of people coming and going several times a day, because typically, they study the morning and the evening hours, like rush hours. But in this case, we want them to look at the Synthes traffic and make sure we look at when they impact that intersection on Second Street.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Other questions for Mr. Manning?
I have a handful of questions. So, traffic impact fees, it's my understanding then, the traffic impact fees would total about $250,000. We would then pay to contribute towards the construction of this bridge.
Correct.
That is the total amount that we would contribute towards the construction of this bridge and or any bridge?
Yes.
Okay. And what typically would those impact fees be dedicated to, or traffic impact fees be dedicated to? Well, if it wasn't going towards the bridge as outlined in the contract here, where would they be going?
They go to the traffic impact fee.
Just to the fund, essentially.
Seven hundred and seven dollars a home, so.
Okay. And you clarified the TAP fees are about, or projected to be about $19,000 per unit as far as water TAP fees? Okay. So, we're collecting a $531,000?
Probably seven.
Right, plus the TAP fees. So, we can anticipate seven to eight million dollars in TAP fees for the total build out of this?
How many years it takes when we get all them built?
And where typically would we allocate those funds?
I guess I have a question probably for the board. They go to the Water Enterprise Fund.
Right. And the reason I'm asking is going to, it kind of piggybacks off the question in here where we can commit to water that we currently have with the system that we currently have, 335 homes. So, essentially, what we're doing, which, I mean, I think there's a lot of positives to this agreement. One of the big things that kind of makes me uneasy or a red flag is we're committing to a system that we don't currently have, and there's some what-ifs there as far as we are committing to providing water to the full development here. However, we currently can only guarantee 335 homes. So, where I'm getting at is what is the anticipated cost in today's dollars to make up those upgrades needed to get to the full build out of this projected development?
Well, the way we intend to add to our current capacity, either have to drill an additional well, which is in our master plan to do in years, or we keep going down the path of trying to get a bigger reuse system. My guess is the well may come before that, because we're still in the sampling stage for reuse, so once that system is running and got the drift now moved through, we'll have, it's, I think, almost, I can't remember exactly, but fifty percent additional capacity above what we currently produce. Down the well to that, and we're only looking for probably 180 feet to totally be done by the time they get to the last sixty homes or so.
So, you're confident that?
Yes.
One well, sinking a new well, would accomplish our commitment that we're guaranteeing in this agreement? And what would, I mean, if you put a dollar amount on it in today's?
Typical wells run about one to 1.2 million, depending on what depth they go to.
And that would be?
If we drill a well to what they call the arrival lap, which are between 1,000 and about 1,900 feet, that water would be diverted to one of these treatment plants, and we'd have to do a small expansion on that just to handle this problem.
Okay. So, that seven to eight million dollars that full build out going into the Water Enterprise Fund can be allocated to get us up to our commitment that we're promising in this agreement?
Yes.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you so much.
Additional board questions? Ms. Clerk, Trusty Clerk?
I have, I have a three or four. Is that okay, that I have three or four? Okay, in paragraph 5.4, it says, "In further recognition of the value of the north-south connection provided by the crossing, the town may, at its discretion, pursue funding sources to provide additional reimbursement to the annexor up to, but not exceeding, fifty percent of the cost." Could you explain that to me?
That would be outside funds, such as CDOT or PBACG federal funds. We don't currently have anything scheduled for that on their list, so if we were to get that funding through that source, it would be a number of years off and probably be, it's too late to really help. But we wanted to offer that if we did get some sort of a grant that seemed to be beneficial to all parties, that we certainly would help that as well, up to, I think it says, fifty percent.
Okay, great.
If anticipated, it would be Town of Monument funds.
Okay. And then... I just had a question about the, the water from Mr. Tharnish. So, I think I sent you an email earlier asking if the mathematical equation I gave you from my determination of what you had written regarding the water, that we will be at a deficit of 95 acre-feet of water for this development currently?
That is correct.
Thank you. No, that's, that's okay. And, is there any way you could explain the construction of the bridge to me?
It's not designed. The, I guess you'd call it, the bridge category, we're putting it in as a ten-year storm. There's a hundred-year fluke lane. To span that is very expensive, and once it gets down around ten-year, you're more like what we'd design our drainage system around town. If we get a storm that's over a ten-year storm, there'll be water in the streets, because the drainage system can handle it. So, we thought that was a reasonable place to put the bridge.
So, we, do we know how big the bridge will be?
No. The preliminary concept is that it would be a concrete structure with openings, several that will allow the water to pass for the ten years.
So, it would take, it would take care of traffic coming both ways?
Correct.
One lane each way?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
The cross-section hasn't been decided upon, you know, we'll be talking about bike lanes and other things like that. There are some paths through the development, so we'll have to decide if we want sidewalk there or whether the paths function. We may have sidewalk on one side, but we'll decide that when we bring forward the final development plan.
So, that north-south corridor in the middle of all that, that's going to be a two-lane road?
At least two-lane road.
Okay, so you have it decided that comes?
No, we've got a 60-foot right-of-way. If you take the typical cross-section of that, yeah, you talk about two lanes and maybe a bike lane, but that would only use up three-fourths of that width of the right-of-way. So, if we decide based on the traffic study that there needs to be more lanes, whether it be a suicide in the middle, or turning lanes, or whatever it might be, then widen it by at least one more lane.
Okay. And the bridge will be built, because usually, I'm not a traffic, you know, traffic individual, but... but, uh, when, once you build a bridge, it's much more costly to come back and widen it as opposed to just widening on flat land, I assume that's the case. So, the bridge would be accommodating that kind of, uh, uh, expansion?
Yes, and the, uh, the bridge itself, we wouldn't anticipate having to widen. Otherwise, we'd be considering that right now, but certainly if we get traffic information on a final plan that requires that or recommends it, either by them or by our consultants, we'll discuss that as well. But, there's no, there's a pretty good distance between the south end of their north development and the north end of their south development that'll allow people to graduate into a two-lane if there's more on either end. So, all, only people using the bridge will be going through, not accessing other areas.
Can you just clarify, and I'm sorry, I heard this and maybe I didn't understand, but... So, the traffic study itself prior, and as the development begins, it will determine when it's required for that bridge to be put, how does that work, the, the protocol, please?
Well, we don't see any impact to our system if, on the construction on the south end, because it's gonna use a county road.
Okay.
So, our concern is that we get traffic off the north-end development that will not be able to go south and then will, uh, impact the Mitchell Road and, uh, Second Street corridor. So, the idea is to put a trigger in there that would then say, okay, at this point, based on traffic study, that would be level of service E, there will be the bridge built before you continue to build or even start to build on the north end.
But, based on the, the, the final build-out, it's, it's a fair assumption a bridge is required?
Oh, yeah.
So, I'm, I'm gonna ask this, does, does the town, does the board, again, and annexations have to be a win for both sides? And, knowing that it's gonna be required, can we require, hey, that bridge is going in? We're not, we're not waiting for traffic to get to A, B, it, it's gonna go. It has to be, so why not, good intent and keeping traffic smoothly, the bridge goes in? I'm asking, I'm not telling.
Well, I think the applicant will address that, but what we're trying to do here is get a development we feel is beneficial to the town and put parameters on that that protect the town, but allow the de- development to proceed. Presumably, without the development on the south end and the revenue that will generate, it would be difficult for the developer to build a bridge, which is a two and a half to three million dollar project.
And then, my last question, there's been a lot of good information shared on what revenue is going to come into the town, but there's been no information shared of numbers of what it's gonna cost the town.
Oh, uh...
It, it, it's, in, in a simple ledger cost analysis, we're bringing X over this period, which isn't absolute. Uh, there's lots of variables, but, you know, what are our outlining costs at first year, five years, ten years? You know, checks and balances, has something like that been done and maybe haven't seen it, or? Because I mean, we're talking about reuse, we're talking about wells, and these are all hypotheticals, but what the developer's asking for is pretty absolute. So, I'm asking, does that exist?
What particularly, I'm sorry?
Well, I mean, I've been told as far as what TAF fees and vari- variables are coming to the town, but I've seen nothing about what's gonna cost the town and what it's gonna cost the people that live in the town, the taxpayers. And, I will say, my concern is water. I'm gonna be very honest, I mean, we're getting X, but we're still now behind, and now we need a strategy, and there's variations in cost and solutions, obviously, so I mean...
So, are you talking ongoing maintenance?
No.
No, I'm talk, I'm talking more capital to keep this development up and running. What's it gonna come out of our pocket? If we get ten million dollars, what costs us twenty million dollars, I'm kinda going, well...
I think...
Because TAF fees are, TAF fees are a one-time hit. They, this is not longevity for the life of the town.
Mr. Tharnish addressed that.
Maybe Tom, maybe Tom, you can address this, please.
Well, I gave you what the average cost to drill a well when that comes. Uh, if you're looking at reuse, I think we gave you some preliminary numbers, probably about a year ago when we first started talking about it, a year, year and a half. But, we were looking at the process status near the seven, seven to eight million dollar range. Ongoing maintenance costs, when you get a new subdivision that comes in like that, first of all, a lot of that stuff comes in warranties. So, we're not gonna do any maintenance on those for, for at least the first couple of years. But, even with newer systems, maintenance effect is, is pretty minimal compared to the existing infrastructure that we're carrying. Now, we have, um, you know, water mains will be extended, uh, meters that get put into houses that will have to read every month. And, there's a bit of a system for meter fees when a, when a, a building comes in and wants to put a meter in, the planning department has a fee structure set up for that. The, um, you know, the town controls a, a good chunk of this as far as the type of things that go in. Five acres go in, we, we have a certain type that we like to, we can carry parts of them. That's the part that comes into play. And the overall maintenance cost over the first several years for some vision dislodge that's gonna be building for me, is pretty minimal as a town. I don't believe that, uh, the, the current tax, uh, or, since the tax of current water customers that we have, I wouldn't expect, uh, an effect on the rates. Now, there will be, uh, the potential to come and talk to you as a board, not because of rates, but it's gonna have nothing to do with supplying this new development. That will be to, to help upgrade our existing infrastructure, and then we'll present some financial documents and show you where less than one hundred is the last increase, which is about two and a half years ago. So, but that'll be separate from this. I, I don't expect any cost other than the initial capital just to, to get this system ready.
So, to accommodate for the deficit in the water that, that trustee shared with us, you feel comfortable that putting a well in would address that?
If, if we end up going a well prior to having a reuse system, I believe that, that should be enough for, enough capacity to happen.
Okay, thanks.
But, I will tell you, when you put wells, you need to, when you go through the state, the state chair's office has to be involved in the whole process. And they will tell you exactly how much water you're allowed to pump out of the ground. So, that'll be by decree, because I said, he knows that all of our wells have decrees, so you know what the maximum pumping capacity is on those. We're four acre foot a year town on average. Uh, we have, uh, the potential to probably dose that, but that means we have to, uh, increase our capacity by that as well or rehabilitate the current well, maybe increase its flow from a hundred to a hundred fifty, if we can stay within that, that decree.
All right, thank you.
Trustee, Elliot, did you have a name?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Can you go back, Mr. Tharnish? Shouldn't you, I was trying to write down everything you were saying about what happened last year when I wasn't here and what that cost was?
Um, last year, we're talking about...
You said, as far as the cost for the water situation, you said, um, one point two million for a well, eight million for the reuse, and then prior to the eight million for the reuse, you said there was something that was also being included in this cost here for last year when you were talking to trustee Bornstein about the costs? Did I miss that amount? You didn't mention the amount of that?
I'm trying to remember that.
I think, I think if I'm correct, you, you had mentioned seven, eight mil for the treatment?
Yes.
And then the reuse, there wasn't a number, so, and we know that takes time, and then there was one point two for the well. So, I think that blank number might have been relative to the reuse that wasn't acknowledged.
Okay, so this eight million is for treatment?
That would be for, uh, uh, state-of-the-art, uh, top water plant that can treat water of that, of that nature. And, yeah, those are rough numbers, those could fluctuate a little bit depending, if it comes to the board to approve that larger project, that most likely would be some of the talent that go out and give a low cost loan. No sense paying that kind of cash, you need to have...
So, so, ten million dollars then? Is that what I'm hearing? Ten million dollars to do all of it?
Between the well and a reuse system?
Yeah.
It's pretty close.
Thanks, thank you.
Uh, I just wanted to mention, we do have, uh, three ordinancees to act on, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. First one, twenty, is for the annexation of that northern part, Willow Springs number one. The second one is Willow Springs number two. The third is the PD zoning and the approval of, sketch plan that goes along with it.
Mr. Manning? You had mentioned the school district, and you also mentioned the county. That money in lieu of the one point two acres, that goes to the school district, correct?
Yes, upon, uh, Land Use Amendment.
And also, have we had any, has anybody brought up concern about truck traffic, trucking traffic? Right now, all of our delivery trucking goes through Second Street. I know it's off in the future, but does Willow Springs, and this might be a question for the applicant, does Willow Springs see this as an issue if some trucking starts going through?
Certainly, that would be up to them. Uh, certainly, there will be truck traffic. Um, some may still use Second Street, can't prevent that, but...
I was just curious if anybody's expressed concern with that.
No, not specific to me, no.
Okay, and, do you wanna do the applicant's presentation now?
I have a few other points of clarification if I may.
Okay.
So, uh, Tom, I wanna clarify to make sure that I understand this correctly. Um, so, the ninety-five-ish acre foot per year deficit, I'll call it, that's a deficit in capacity, not a deficit in water rights, if I'm understanding that correctly. We have the rights to produce enough water for this development, it's just the capacity that we currently have. It's about, would be about ninety-five acre foot per year short of what they're asking.
Right, when you talk, uh, what I talk about when I say capacity is our pumping capacity for our existing wells. Water rights, uh, when an annexation goes through like this, all the water rights is needed to the town. And then, the town has, uh, watering in different categories, and I think we've heard a little bit about this, non-tributary, non-tributary.
Right.
So, you have to go to water court for, and I think I explained this in one of, one of my emails, this is an application plan that the town will have to go to court to get approved. It's not like we have to go to court to, um, to try to get a senior priority date, uh, that would, that would, take a lot of people around us that have senior dates already. This is not, this is a fragmentation plan, so that we can change that water to where we can, uh, either pull it out there or put it out somewhere else, uh, that's contained. Uh, because all the water's gonna be connected underground, it wasn't this pie in the sky, everybody's, all the water's connected, but everybody has the finite boundaries of what's underneath the property. So, we needed a well, we decided that we want to drill a well down there. Once we own it, we could do that, or drill somewhere within somebody feet of that and pull out the same water. And that's why our attorney had told you guys in the past about a continuity of well fill cases. You know, this is, this is a fall behind in line.
I just, it, it's coming together a little bit more clearly for me, and I sure appreciate the opportunity to clarify. I just wanna be sure that, um, we don't need, again, pie in the sky, a ten million dollar project to bring this up to capacity. A one and a half million dollar or one to two million dollar well accomplishes what we're committing to legally here.
You could, is he one of the, one of the watching that? But, we're currently working right now.
Okay, thank you very much.
If I could just, listening to this conversation, uh, when Tom comes up with the figure for water reuse and, and the eight to ten million, that's not just for Willow Springs, that's for the whole town.
Right.
You know, so, it isn't that we're gonna spend ten million dollars to bring in seven million for Willow Springs or whatever.
No, I, I understand that, and again, I'm just, you know, I don't want to, you know, we have options. I want options, I've wanted that from day one, when I was first elected, is we want to hear options. And what I don't wanna see is us, you know, moving forward on a particular development or a plan that limits those options in the future. So, again, I appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, would the applicant like to present?
Good evening, my name is John Maynard, I'm a planning consultant with NES. And, if it's, uh, permissible, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to speak from the back, so I can use this pointer and point to the screen in the back, and hopefully, everybody can see that.
Do we have sound back there?
I can talk loud.
Okay.
It's pre-quieted.
Um, I'm gonna make the presentation for Monument Creek Ranch. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go over a lot of the, uh, information that Mr. Manning has presented to you, perhaps in a slightly different format, so please bear with me with the duplication. Again, the location of the property shown here in hatch, um, on South Baptist Road, and then Forest Lakes Drive, and there's congluity with this project, the Forest Lakes Drive. The eastern boundary of the property is the railroad, um, and of course, Forest Lakes Development's over here on, on the west. On the north, um, is Synthes, and as I'll show you internally, probably on another slide, um, Creek System and the proposed road system. This is the first, uh, page of the sketch plan document. I show it to you, and I, and I know you can't read it, but it includes the, um, vicinity map, which I just showed you. It includes the signature blocks that are required by the town. There's a land use table, which I'll show in detail in just a minute, and then the legal description of the property. The second sheet of the, is the, uh, map that was previous, previously shown to you, and I'm gonna go through a little bit and explain what these colors mean. The largest land use in, uh, Monument Creek Ranch is open space, and that's this light green area here. Much, if not all of it, is within either floodplain or purple snow jumping mouse habitat, and it has been identified through an environmental study in terms of both floodplain and habitat. The second largest land use is this color here, that's a single-family residential land use of, of density of three to five units per acre. The next largest is these two parcels here, which are what I call attached single-family. They could be patio homes, or detached, uh, could be common, uh, type of, but the density range there is six units to ten units per acre. And, the next capital rate is these two parcels here, which we have, um, identified as estate lots. They are, take six and, if I recall correctly, seven and nine acres in size approximately. And, uh, as you probably know, this parcel here, which is not a part of the development, but was originally the ranch house for the Tom Watt property, which all of this was at one point in time, uh, is on this parcel. And these two large parcels are consistent, uh, really with that existing parcel, which remains in the county. The last land use is these ducking areas, here, here, here are four of them. And those are, uh, parks that will be owned and maintained by a metropolitan district. If you're aware of, you know, the public districts, the land that they own is open to public use. The district has the right to restrict use. I'll give you an example, in, uh, in a flying horse that has a metropolitan district, there are parks that they constructed were being, uh, used by non-residents, and they chose to restrict essentially all field access of that sort of control, but, uh, for now. That may or may not happen here, but, um, they're open to the public as long as permitted by, uh, by the, um, the access is controlled by the metropolitan district. I'm gonna talk a little bit now about the circulation system, as I mentioned. Baptist Road is here, connection to Forest Lakes Drive and into Forest Lakes in this location. Uh, on the north, we have Synthes at, uh, Avenue, which, uh, dead ends at the site right here. The proposed Collector Road, which will run through the site, uh, in this location, is shown in white. There is a ranch road currently that is very close to this alignment, um, but this will be, um, an engineered roadway and will be located to the degree possible outside of the environmentally sensitive area shown in green. As you probably know, there's a bridge across the creek now, um, and that allows, uh, really allows this homeowner to get access to the property, and, uh, quite frankly, I think this homeowner could have emergency access at the two-minute with the fire marshal several years ago about the underpass that gives access to the parcel. of the fire marshal several years ago about the underpass that gets access to the parcel. He told the lady that was renting at that time, if you have an emergency, don't tell them to come this direction, tell them to come this direction, otherwise we can't get there. So, that existing bridge is important. It may be possible that that bridge became as a trail at some point in time in the future when the new bridge is constructed, that's to be determined with construction drawings. What I didn't mention in terms of land use is trail system. As you probably know, there's an existing trail along Forest Lakes Drive on this side of the street. The environmental study that was done here requested that the existing cattle trails be permitted to be used for essentially recreational trails within the development. As long as vision wildlife continues to permit that, we will have an internals trail system that basically follows the road and probably has loops internally based on where the cattle trails currently are. So, that's the development intent. Again, that will be controlled by a vision wildlife review. Did I do that?
It's a little sensitive there. Go backwards.
Thanks. This is the third map within the sketch plan, this is a phasing diagram. And the colors are indicated here, but I'll generally show you generally what the phases are. The first phase would be this area on the southern port portion of the property. That's from Forest Lakes Drive and Baptist Road. So, from this portion of development, there would be no impact on Mitchell and Second Street. The next phase after this would be this parcel up here, and that's where the traffic study will come to play. And that, where this parcel is proposed to the development, traffic study will determine what the impacts currently are, both from this and existing on Second and Mitchell, to determine when construction of the bridge, which is in this location, will be constructed. So, that's the key feature. As Larry said, there may be no development up here because the, the, what we, it's just a key intersection, maybe at capacity when we get there, so we hope that's not the case, but it is. So, the next phase is here, and then we work essentially south from that. And this, this piece is somewhere in the middle, that's the phasing. And several other slides here, first, here's a summary of the land use. Again, the two estate lots, which total sixteen acres, the three and a half, three to five unit per acre density, about three hundred seventeen is the total number of units. Attached residential, nineteen acres, about seventy-seven units. Open spaces, you can see of the two hundred nineteen acres, the open space plus the park is more than half of land, this particular annexation and development. And then the right-of-way at seven acres is the amount of land that's provided for that collector street that goes through the property northbound. We proposed a density cap of three hundred ninety-six units. The annexation agreement, say four, bounded it up to four hundred. The actual development number is going to be dependent on site-specific plans. I've included this slide to indicate, this probably looks somewhat familiar in terms of color and land use. This is the approved PUD document within El Paso County. The only changes between this and what we propose now is, one, this plan has density gap of four hundred fifty units. And secondly, there's no connection, Mitchell Road connection, and there's no collector through here. So, the main advantage to the town, I believe, is first of all, the ability to connect the north end of the town with the south end of the town, and a parallel road to Old Denver Highway and I twenty-five that would provide before traffic existing and proposed within the town on the west side rail tracks. This is a drawing that's the land use component of the town's comprehensive plan. I've outlined the area we're talking about here. You can see that the open spaces as proposed is very similar, if not exactly the same as the PD sketch plan, and the land use densities are the same as well. So, we are consistent with both the cities, the town's comprehensive plan as it relates to land use and annexation. I picked out a few of the policies within the town comprehensive plan that we think apply to this particular request. First of all, and I'll read this one, connect Mitchell Road to Baptist Road to reduce congestion in the downtown area into a live water replacement center such as Johnson &amp; Johnson from Leone and the Synthes that are accessed I twenty-five. The Mitchell Road connection has always been problematic because it's through private property that's not available either to this applicant or the town, and has a very significant costing of Monument Creek. The solution that we are presenting to you tonight, which is a collector road through the middle of this property, we think benefits the town and benefits this development. From a land use to like linkage between neighborhoods, coordinate development with local governments, including the school district, I'll talk specifically about the school district in just a minute. Open space and trails, again, linkages and coordinate with local development, like local governments. School, this school site specific, on this drawing, this is Forest Lakes Drive, where Forest Lakes Drive turns and goes into Forest Lakes here. As you may know, the school district owns a ten-acre parcel of land located here. We worked, built it through with Dr. Peck of the school district, and they did conceptual plans on three different sites, two of which were entirely within Monument Creek Ranch. And the second one, or the last one, which was the select one, which would add this five-acre parcel of land to this piece, and would include the vacation of this portion of Mitchell Avenue, which won't go anywhere north. And there's been discussion already with the county about that vacation to create an overall probably sixteen, seventeen acre school site here. We have excluded this from the annexation, but there is language in the annexation agreement that covers the requirement for dedication. And there's a memo, I understand, between the applicant and the school district that also addressed this dedication. So, we've got a very cooperative relationship, I believe, with the school district. I don't know if Cheryl's here tonight, she was at planning commission and spoke on our behalf. But we think this will be a fine school site. And we believe that the school district intends to build this site next in their capital improvements program. Again, this is the sketch plan, and I put it up here to answer questions.
Any questions for the applicant?
Can you show, can you show me where the bridge is supposed to be?
Yes. It's, the bridge is in the middle of this green area, it's basically right here. That's the, that's the stream channel goes right through here. As you probably know, Monument Creek runs through this way, and Teach Out Creek comes under the interstate actually right here and joins it. So, the bridge is right here, and that's where the existing bridge is.
Any other questions?
Just for educational purposes, what is the, I guess, the purpose of not including the, the school site into the annexation?
It benefits the school district to have all of their property under section, both from a water and wastewater standpoint and the development standpoint. So, we had originally included that five acres before we had the negotiation with the schools, and we removed it at their request.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Um, in the, underneath the metro district on, under eleven point zero, it says, "The annexor desires to utilize the financing mechanism as provided in the previously formed Willow Springs Ranch Metropolitan District." Would you mind going over that plan a little bit for me?
Well, I'm not the author of the metropolitan district, but it has been formed. And metropolitan districts are approved, in this case, approved by the town, and it's...
I, I meant the financing part.
Financing part? It allows for bonding, and I'm not a financial planner, so I can't accurately answer that question. But the state act, I think it's called Title thirty-two, which allows the creation of metropolitan district, so the financing can be for...
Thank you. I don't want to take too many, but I have one more. In the original presentation on the preliminary, it said, it's the, the letter that was in that package stated that there would be no requirement of the developer to put any burden on the town as far as financially was concerned. And so, I'm wondering why we are offering to pay towards construction of this bridge two hundred and fifty thousand?
Well, that's a, that's a policy, I guess, discussion. There are, from the applicant's standpoint, the cost of the, of the bridge is going to be two and a half to three million dollars. All of that will be funded by the applicant. And as an incentive to provide a transportation link that's desirable by the town, the agreement that we reached with staff was that we would be reimbursed the fees. Let me back up and say how this works. The developer, on a house-by-house basis, pays the transportation fee to the town. The town places that money in an escrow account and holds it. And at such time as the bridge is constructed and accepted by the town, then that money is reimbursed to the developer as an incentive to build that structure. So, that's the, that's what the annexation agreement says.
Thank you very much.
I just have a curiosity question. Is this, this something that the developer normally asks for, or is this something that town personnel put on the table to the developer?
The developer actually asked for a lot more than what's currently in the annexation agreement. So, this is what the final agreement between staff and the developer came to.
Okay, and then two smalls, two small questions. I, I just wanted to confirm, and you said, the majority of this development is going to be three to five units per acre, is that correct, of what you're saying? And then, this is probably too early to ask, but what is the strategy on the development? How are you going to get into it? Is it the plan to come down Second, go down Mitchell? What, what is that vision?
Well, the first, as I said, the first phase is off of Forest Lakes Drive.
Okay.
So, all of the access is Forest Lakes Drive to Baptist Road, and over to the, to the interstate or to Old Denver Highway. So, that's the access for the, the first phase of development, which is really two parcels. And then, once we get to the northern section with access from Synthes, we would extend Synthes into the project in a phased manner. It would be, well, let me back up, and I'll point on the map.
When the development down here occurs, this portion of road leads to this temporary turnaround would be constructed, so we start construction of a collector road with this development. Then we start developing on the north. At such time as the trigger point in terms of traffic at Mitchell and Second Street is reached, this road, including the bridge, has to be triggered.
And I'm bringing this up because with Forest Lakes and their traffic studies, and that was deemed that coming through Monument and that amount of traffic, our community was not designed for that, the roads were not designed for that. And as I see you're starting from here and then going here, I'm just thinking, that amount of traffic, what kicks off that little button that says, hey, this is doing damage to our roads, too much traffic? And then, we've got a long duration until a bridge is built, and maybe the damage is done. Who pays for our roads to fix them? So, I'm just playing the what-if game.
Well, right now, I don't, unless they're shopping or visiting friends up in Forest Lakes goes into the town, you can't get there. I mean, I guess you can get there through back roads in the county, but I would guess very few people do that.
All right, thank you very much.
Any additional questions from the board?
This is a public hearing item, so I'll open it up to the public for anyone who would like to speak for this item.
Hello, board, how are you?
Thank you, sir, and thank you, Tom, for all you do.
Jim Romanello, one seven six three seven White Marble Drive. A couple things, Tom hit one on the head about warranties. It sounds like water is pretty covered. The aquifers that you would tap into would not only supply the development, but the whole town. But he hit the head of warranties. After been through this with the metro district at Village Center, I can tell you, be aware of a few things. One, has the board done a fiscal analysis on the mills? And whether this will pay the bond and the infrastructure? And if not, I would recommend you do. Number two, warranties. There's a couple ways to handle or defray some costs. One, I'm sure the developer plans on building quality streets, yes? Well, if there's a two-year warranty, make it three. Then you defray costs another year, and you got more money. There's a lot of things you guys can look at with this that I've been through, and I'll tell you, I've been through it. So, just make it a three-year warranty instead of a two, and that defrays a lot of costs and saves you guys a lot of money. And then again, look at the mills and the board, the warranties, and make sure of this, please. And it has nothing to say with this gentleman, he seems like a man of integrity and character. Make sure that the board and the staff are aware of holding a bond over the developer until anything and everything is completed. Thank you.
Mr. Manning, we would still be due for cycling a way to address those items, correct?
Was it going to the metro district?
Yes.
The metro district is already formed and approved. So, the terms of that district are already set, unless the developer wants to modify them. The amount of cost ongoing that would be maintenance is limited to the park areas, best I know about this project. So, it's not, as in other cases, going to have to maintain roads, snowplow, and do those kinds of things. So, it's not a situation where I believe that the maintenance obligation is higher than what could be handled by the revenue district, particular district program.
Have we, go ahead.
Was that metro district formed with the county or through us?
Through the town.
Okay.
Have we formally looked at the service plan from the metro district that currently stands to ensure that it would be able to adequately accommodate this development?
The proposal, I believe, that they showed you from the county here, as well as back in two thousand and eight when they came to the town for annexation, was very similar, if not identical, to what they have now. And that's when the metro district was formed, and the first plan approved by the board.
Have we reviewed that service plan in conjunction with this development, this proposal, currently?
If it's approved, we can't go back and unapprove it?
No, but we could certainly ask for modifications to the service plan as a condition for annexation if we felt like it. So, what I'm asking is, have we reviewed the service plan that is currently approved from many years ago for this development?
Financial mechanisms that are really out of the realm of the planning department. What I'm stating is that there's no ongoing obligation for this district, and quite a few homes are participating in it, as opposed to others you might have found where they have a high amount of obligation, other circumstances changed the revenue stream for them, and so they, they're having issues maintaining it. I haven't seen very many metro districts maintaining roads such as the one we previously discussed on the other side of Highway.
I think you've answered my question, thank you very much.
Do we have anyone wishing to speak against this ordinance? Okay.
Or against it?
Yes, please.
One five eight seven eight Midland Valley Way.
So, that, that public use is pretty interesting, not public use, but say that open area, especially in this area, and the kind of people that would want to partake of the... people that would want to partake of the trails. Is there any public access? You start thinking parking, where could, where could other community members take advantage of the open area if it becomes a trailhead system? I mean, that's a lot of acres, a hundred acres of blocking trails and beauty, it looks like. Is that planned?
Do I can answer that question directly now or rather than the rebuttal?
Yes.
The use of a hundred acres of open space will be restricted by fishing wildlife due to the, the species which are, it's not a company that's. Trail system will be public. The design of the parks could include the trailhead. We haven't gotten that far yet. Especially for the largest, the likely area would be either here or here, in one of these, in one of these two parks. They'll be closest to the trail system and closest to Forest Lakes Drive, which is the primary public road. This park is more of the terminal parts of the subdivision, so as this is a pocket park up in here, so there's probably it would be in one of these two locations. Just a question of clarification.
Chris Wohomi, one six four nine six Curl Oak Drive. Just wanted to ask what the contingency was when the bridge has solved the traffic or congestion problems for all the folks up north who are heading through downtown to be it's a one to five or otherwise access twenty-five.
Not sure I have any questions.
Sure. With the development that's going on in the north end, although that would trigger a bridge to be built and other, you know, reasons to go south, it seems to me that there would still be a need to handle the traffic that's flowing north and maybe flowing north through Second Street or over to twenty-five. So I was just asking what the contingency was for handling the construction, considering you're going through that one.
In my mind, yeah, the traffic study may end at some point requiring additional proof at some middle to the intersection at Second, to the intersection at Old Denver Second. So it could be, or result in more improvements having to make based on the future studies that come in.
Is that factored into the applicant, or is that something for the town to worry about early?
The developer, as each site plan and/or a site plan for the entire site comes in, will look at what the impacts are. Particularly the traffic study will not only assess those impacts, but recommend improvements to solve the issues that are brought up.
Would anybody else like to speak on this item? Does the app, can't have any further rebuttal?
No, that's a further question.
Okay. This time, we'll bring it back to the board for further questions or discussion or motion.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just have a comment, and I've, I've never requested this in six years of sitting on the board, but I, I'd like to absorb this a little bit more, and I think there was good information here today. I'd like to maybe postpone this to the next meeting just to review some of the things we said. I would like to see that service plan, obviously that was generated prior to anybody sitting up here, just to see what it is. Again, because I think we're all aware of a Metro District does have a difficulty. We know where they're coming, and we just want to be smart and safe and make good decisions. And then to add to that, I would love to see from Mr. Tharnish, again, and I think he has a strategy for, for the efficiency on what water, and maybe he can just do a preliminary based on, hey, the next six years, this is approved, this is built, we're going to do this, we do this. Because some of these things you've shared take time. They're not happening overnight, but at least it gives us a vision, a timeline. I think it's good information. So that's just the trustee's opinion.
Any additional discussion?
Who negotiated this? The, the agreement here, the, I guess the annexation agreement.
Well, it started a while ago, included at the time the town manager, the town attorney, myself and Mr. Tharnish, in combination with his consultants. So it's been through quite a bit of discussion. I think as Mr. Mayor had mentioned, they had to, had to compromise a little about what they really wanted to do because of what we felt were concerns that had to be set by the town. And so it was a combination of initially the town manager, myself, Mr. Tharnish, and then, of course, the town manager was no longer involved, and so was the attorney, myself, and Tom, and his consultants.
And who was our attorney that helped put together this annexation agreement? Ms. Corley? So she saw the final agreement prior to her departure?
Yes.
Okay. The reason I'm asking, I guess, really educational for, for understanding the process, I know this has been a working, breathing, living thing for, for quite some time. My biggest concern was water. Obviously, that's, that's my thing, and that's my biggest concern. You've put my mind at ease on a lot of that. Where my concern lies now, in addition to what Mr. Romanello brought to, to my attention, which I hadn't thought of, so I appreciate that, doing due diligence and proper due diligence from a fiscal analysis standpoint, the verbiage. I mean, there's, there's a few things that I would like to see more plainly added into this agreement. I love this, this proposal. I mean, it seems like a wonderful development. The water, again, my mind is at ease. What I would like is the verbiage to be a little, little bit more clear in stating a maximum amount for which we're going to contribute to, from our traffic impact fees to the construction of a bridge or any bridge or any crossing. I'd like that language plain. And again, if that's what's being presented as I read it as, I want it clearly stated that that's what I'm reading. In addition to water, I'd like to see something in there as far as stipulation where it obligates us as a town to use those water tap fees for that capacity upgrade that we're guaranteeing. I would like it black and white to say that we're going to allocate X dollars from the impact fees or the water tap fees from this development to go specifically to the capacity upgrade that this development warrants or causes. Those are some, some verbiage changes I would like to see. Other than that, it looks like a great development, and I, I very much am looking forward to, to something being done, but I would like some changes made to the verbiage, and I would like an attorney to review those changes.
Is there any? Trustee Clark?
I, I would like to add that I also have concerns about the water and several legal questions that I wasn't able to get answered since I don't have access to an attorney. But I, I am not confident that, that we have the ability to provide necessary water, and I would need to see that more clearly to feel more confident about this project.
Any additional comments from board? Okay. Do we have a motion on ordinance number two zero two zero one eight?
I'd like to motion to postpone and negotiate as discussed. And that, that includes negotiation with the developer as well?
Well, second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Van Hope.
Mayor Protam Elliott?
No.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
No.
Trustee Stevens?
Uh, no.
Trustee Koopman?
Yes.
Trustee Bornstein?
Yes.
That motion fails in a tie. Do we have any other motions for ordinance number two zero two zero dash two zero one eight? That motion fails on a lack of a motion.
Do you want to? Based on somewhat anticipating this particular situation, it may be that the applicant would support a postponement.
It may not support it back, but yes, I'll support it. This is three years now, and I have to go backwards to do the right thing. And so I understand that this may be the first night that you're, but it's not the first time that your staff and the rest of this community has been a part of this development. And so I'm not sure, I, you know, I, I mean, we, we postponed it, and certainly that's a, you know, for clarification. I'm not sure about what the negotiation will be, but I'm certainly open for a postponement to find out if we can.
Obviously, the other options are, except that they're forthcoming.
And to clarify my, my term negotiation, simply, the edits on the verbiage is what I was getting at, so.
Half a million dollars for three years, and I'm trying to do the right thing, and it's just.
Thank you, sir. In light of the new comments, Trustee Koopman, would you like to motion another postponement?
Motion to postpone and again, discuss verbiage.
Can we modify this motion to include all three ordinances?
Okay. So, second, oh, I'm sorry.
How about a time limit so that we can expedite this process?
I was saying, I was saying the next meeting. I'm not saying to drag this on.
I'd like discussion to happen this week. Is that possible to do and communicate with the board and, and an attorney?
You talking about fifteen to the month?
I'm talking about can we discuss with the developer with what we've discussed here as a board, keeping the board in the loop on what we're talking about and get the eyes of an attorney on it? Can we talk about that this week?
We cannot take your direction, but all of your discussions seem to be in an open public forum.
No, I, I don't want any additional discussion other than what I've said. I vocalized my concerns and what I wish to see happen. I guess I can clarify and make sure that you understand my concerns, if you'd like to do that now.
Sure, we can have it ready as.
Okay. Great. So the motion to postpone, to review verbiage in the annexation agreement to be conducted between town staff and the developer this week with an alternate draft to be presented to the board and up for vote at our next public meeting.
Can we amend that to include the service plan review?
I, I.
I mean, I did, I have.
I think that would be adequate.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Ms. Van Hope.
Trustee Stevens?
Yes.
Trustee Koopman?
Yes.
Trustee Bornstein?
Yes.
Mayor Wilson?
Yes.
Trustee Clark?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Elliott?
Yes.
That motion passes six zero. Next item on the agenda, discussion item, intertown manager. Would anybody start this discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I would suggest maybe you. I think you added it, so certainly.
Actually, I didn't.
Oh, well.
I think it's just something that needs to be addressed, though.
I think last we left this, we were going to put together a contract, and where are we at in that process?
That contract was put together, Robert did the contract, we sent it to a lawyer to review, not Sears, but it's Sears, engaged attorney, and that came back, and I believe I sent it to you all, but he had no problems with the contract itself.
I, I didn't get it.
You sent the contract to us?
I sent the lawyer's opinion to you.
I, I didn't get it.
I don't know that we've gotten that.
The lawyer's opinion was that there's no issues with the contract as written. The contract was sent, I believe.
That was the, was that the draft, or was that?
Yeah, the draft.
Okay.
So, so I'm, I'm just going to bring to the board without sharing confidentiality of the executive sessions, but, but, but I was a swing vote and based on the information, and there was some different, there was some additional information, and by my interpretation as an individual, having that information would have changed the direction I would have gone. And, and for that reason, it has to be addressed with the board because based on that, I don't support where, where my vote went.
Okay.
In the greatest respect of everybody here, so.
Then, I'd like to correct, there wasn't additional information that was provided. It was provided to us multiple times.
Well, I, I, I would also like to object because I really feel like I was misled in that meeting and given contrary information, information that we had already received for the direct result of manipulation of my vote.
I take offense for Robert, not because that has nothing to do with this, but.
I wasn't really addressing you.
I know you weren't addressing me.
I was addressing the board.
Robert isn't here to say anything, and I know that he worked at the direction of the board.
Again, I, I'm addressing the board, and I'd like to talk to the board.
Ms. Smith, can you continue your comments?
Excuse me. I know that Robert sent you all a copy of what he had gotten from H.R. Green, as well as all the resumes. I know he worked very hard on this, I'm sorry he can't be here to deny you a personal issue. And all I'm saying is that to say he gave misleading information or tried to manipulate votes is just not true, and it's not fair to him and the work he did on this.
And, and, and just, just to comment, at no time have I ever acknowledged to anybody that any individual with intention or otherwise, but, but, but I will stand on the record, and we do have to bring this public and get the TV and get the media in here, we will, because based on what was supplied and based on what the mayor's referencing and based on an email trail, there's a differential. But if it played factor to how I voted, this had to be brought to the attention. I've thrown nobody under the bus, so if we want to play it that way, then I suggest that we get everybody in here and let's put the facts on the table and let everybody see and let them interpret.
Yeah, we can play the tape.
Because that's not my intent to do.
So Mr. Bishop has been very thorough in the way that he has worked with us. We all have gotten the same information, including some paper copies for that executive session, and we all voted to move forward negotiating with Mike Foreman, and we are dead in the water now. No interim manager, not moving forward, and it's because we've got people that are changing their minds after the fact, and we've all been given the same information. So this is game plan. This is total game plan.
I'll object to that. Trustee Elliott, if I may, again, I know how I voted, my vote was my vote, but the reality is, I have a couple questions. I mean, the question is, did we all, this board unanimously, unanimously whittle down a list of, of applicants to six finalists?
We were all present.
Or to, to six finalists and to, to three finalists?
We did.
We did.
Okay. So we whittled down unanimously on three finalists. Were each of those finalists negotiated with? Yes or no?
No.
We discussed not to negotiate.
Yes or no?
Um, excuse me?
I said yes or no. My, my, this is a discussion item we're discussing. So did, I'm asking the board, were each of these candidates negotiated with?
No, we did not negotiate with a forty thousand dollar a month option.
Why?
Because it was clearly in their memo that they would only.
Why did we not negotiate with each of the three?
We would be open to reduce or part-time schedule.
Okay. So why did we not negotiate with each?
Rather, we wanted a part-time schedule, and the majority of the board did not feel that was a good option.
So, and Eric says that they would not negotiate their price for a full-time schedule. Is that what you read?
It makes very clear that they are open to negotiating the time.
Again, back and forth. Did we negotiate with each of those? No.
Why would you negotiate with somebody you're not pursuing?
The question is why? We had agreed on three finalists. So the question is, did we negotiate with each of those three finalists? The answer is no. It has come to this board's attention that there was an email received from two of those three finalists from the representative of those. That email was not sent to this board. And I'm not saying intentional or not, but that email, to the best of my knowledge, and I wish Mr. Bishop was here so I could confirm the email, that I could see the email, but he's not. But there was an email sent on the twenty-ninth of September, or of August, I believe, is my understanding.
August twenty-ninth.
Where the representatives of two of these candidates offered to meet with town representatives to determine exactly what our needs were, which is important, so to discuss exactly what our needs were and to find out how to not only exceed those. So, to discuss exactly what our needs were and to find out how to not only exceed those needs, for me to exceed those needs, but to do so within our budget requirements. That's my concern is that, I'm not saying intentional or not, if that email exists, which I don't know because I, I have not seen Mr. Bishop say, hey, all, here, here's the copy of the email, that wasn't brought to our attention. I have the summary that you have, I see the summary that you have, but it's two different things.
No, it's the exact same information.
That says we want to meet with you one-on-one to discuss what your needs are and how we can do, how, how we can exceed those needs well within your budget, that's what it says?
Yes, to that end, we would welcome the opportunity to sit down and discuss the town's needs and how we may be able to assist.
In the context of negotiation?
Yes, that's what it says.
I think the bottom line to our meeting is, is in what I heard, and that's why I joined the mayor and my colleague to listen to the tapes, that there was no negotiation under X people, there was not. That's what it was.
Yeah.
It's not going anywhere. And then documents to show the opposite, which swayed my vote because I based my vote on the information I had at hand. Now, you all can say, no, 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 but when I file my complaint tomorrow, we'll let the legal system figure this out.
Well, we might be due for an FBI investigation.
Seriously?
I'm being sarcastic.
Oh, okay. Well, I, I will file a complaint also because I was definitely being misled. I know that negotiation was on the table and I was told it wasn't. That under no certain terms, three or four times, and I would love to play the tape and let everybody hear it.
I'd be happy to. Any further discussion on this?
I will agree, that, that sure seems like a game, trustee Elliott. And it's, it's a shame that this board can't come to terms with an interim town manager. Let alone, I mean, we haven't even, we haven't even started the process for a permanent. So, I could save this for now, trustee comments, it doesn't matter, this is getting ridiculous. It's ridiculous.
We had a motion to move forward with this, since that motion, we've had board members per, email from their personal accounts, representatives for other candidates, text them, and it's very unprofessional. I even believe we've had a staff member call and try to find out negative information to influence the board's vote. So, I don't know what there is to an end of this. If we come to another majority, do we just find another way to obstruct that? Or what's the, what's the effort to move forward?
I, I just want, my, my objective when this came across was not to start fires and not to point fingers. I think anybody here making a decision and not throwing people under the bus of why this didn't show up or did, that's not the topic. My topic is knowing that these people would have come to the table, I'm just saying reel in and give them a shot. Whether it takes an hour or two hours, they'll be done with it.
But I invited them to the last meeting, one of them is not available. The other one has turned down our offer, we went ahead and made an offer to them for town attorney. He's turned down that officer, offer and the representative stated he was not going to be working with us because they have now signed a contract with Tri-View and it would appear to be a conflict of interest. So, how would the board like to move forward with this?
Well, I know that we were also given the option to have them independent of that institution. And I know that they're still available and we could approach them independent of that institution since they were our finalists and make them an offer.
Did you not hear him saying last meeting that?
I did.
Mr. Fleming is unavailable indefinitely, there is no.
I, I did hear that, but Mr. Wells is available and that was our second choice.
On a part-time basis?
No, he's full-time.
Why wasn't that brought up last week? So, it's changed since last meeting?
Things don't always remain stagnant. Things are in flux, so I don't see why we can't go to the next applicant and see if we can negotiate that one. And if that doesn't work, then go to the third one. And then when we've exhausted those applicants, then we can come to this point where no one can move forward, I guess.
I just don't know how we could have, what, thirty?
Eight.
Awesome, thirty-eight, awesome. Candidates apply, we still have none.
We agreed on, we all agreed on the top three.
And we still.
Again, I go back to my three questions, you know, it's, it's, did we, we agree on the top three? Yes, did we negotiate with each of them? No, why not?
Because.
That's what I don't understand. Again, like I said, my vote's my vote, I voted.
Because nobody was given direction to negotiate with all three of them.
Can you say, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
I said, nobody was given direction to negotiate with all three of them.
You know what, I think we can beat this to death, I think, but I think right now, I think we have the obligation to see if we can, and then make a decision. And I don't think this, this is a major dilemma, it's going to become a dilemma and it's got to stop being so personal. And just because one person thinks something, doesn't make it right and have some respect.
I definitely respect the thing. The cost differential between the two and the one that we voted for.
Wait, wait, miss, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we're not, we know what the costs were. This is negotiation, as we said, and I'm on record five thousand five. They can ask a million dollars, that doesn't mean that's what they need to take.
Can I finish my sentence? So, the cost differential was so extreme between the candidate that we voted for two to begin negotiating with who met our terms on salary and the term, et cetera, was such extreme that we would be dwindling down the other two candidates to maybe ten hours a week because they're so expensive, even if they did come down on their hourly rate. It would be ridiculous and counterproductive.
But they were willing to negotiate and they still are. And they're not saying ten hours or twenty hours, we haven't negotiated.
But trustee Elliott's point, you're talking about they're willing, you're, you're feeling that they're willing to negotiate down fifty percent of the cost?
Yes.
You know, I think trustee Elliott could be a hundred percent right or she could be fifty percent, a hundred percent wrong, but nobody here knows it unless you negotiate and we didn't, we didn't. And the information that came out and it just did is they were willing to. So, I think we have an obligation to do that, that's the point. It's not rushing this and go on nine hundred miles an hour.
Okay, so I think we have, direction to staff and correct me if I'm wrong, to contact Malcolm Fleming and Jason Wells, find out interest and availability and I guess bring them before the board to discuss negotiations.
I have a letter from H.R. Green from August twenty ninth, I don't know that it was an email and I think this went to everyone.
We all have that.
Yeah, this.
So, you have the letter?
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's not referred to that.
Negotiate with either of them and bring them on, even as interim, there would be thirty percent of their base salary for a minimum of six months.
If you run them privately?
But, but we were.
I don't think that would apply now because of H.R. Green's contract, so they would not be involved. That's why, that's why I was saying to contact Malcolm Fleming and Jason Wells, not H.R. Green.
Directly.
Directly.
Gotcha.
Because H.R. Green is not going to do any sort of contract with us.
This paragraph on page two says, if it, if cost is critical consideration and Mr. Fleming is a preferred candidate, we could also propose relinquishing our relationship with him to allow the town to contract with him directly, subject to prefer, a professional server's finder's fee of thirty percent of his base salary for a minimum of six months, not to exceed twelve months. So, basically, thirty percent of his annual salary if we negotiate outside of H.R. Green.
So, I guess what I, I guess what we do need to do then is contact H.R. Green and see if they will release them from their contract with H.R. Green.
And I think the letter says that they will.
For thirty percent.
For thirty percent and then it becomes a question of whether that thirty percent.
Is negotiable?
Is part of their contract that conflicts with. The way I understand it, H.R. Green has a contract with Tri-View right now. If they put anybody in place and receive any money for putting a town manager in place, then it looks like conflict of interest because that town manager will receive anything.
And that's why they said they would release them and we can negotiate with them directly and don't think that he would be involved.
That's why I'm saying we need to find out if H.R. Green is, will release them or they have released them.
Or what that looks like, right?
Or what that looks like.
Okay, I will contact H.R. Green tomorrow, ask him this question, will they release the gentleman? Can we contact them directly? And does that thirty percent fee, is that what I'm reading or is that, doesn't matter? So, I'll, I'll ask them directly those questions and if they say yes, I can contact the two individuals, with my understanding, one of them took a full-time job somewhere else, but I'll contact them both and ask them if they want to come in and sit for an interview and negotiate independently of H.R. Green, contract with the town, for interim town manager.
Trustee Bornstein, you said three, are you talking about all three applicants or H.R. Green and the two applicants?
I was saying, I would think bring H.R. and Green too, because I still think they're looking at the big picture because we still need a full talk, so I don't know, I don't know. They could go, hey, we want to give this up in the front because we need it. But until we ask, all they can do is say no, but I don't think we've done our due diligence. So, I don't think it's a long process, it's one meeting to do this.
Seems like a very difficult several month gig to get. Totally not anything to do with these two, but you referenced the contract getting a stamp of approval from an attorney. I'd like to see the, put together agreement as well, so if there's a way, you know, if we're given direction, can we get a copy of the agreement that was sent to Mr. Foreman?
It's, you know, I'll send it out when I go back.
Because I know the.
I, I thought I did and.
I just know there was, there was back and forth as far as what, what people would like to see in an agreement at times and things like that. You may have, I, I don't know, but. I have not seen one and if you could send or resend, I would, would greatly appreciate it.
When I go back upstairs to.
I would like one to.
Send it to the whole board. Let me clarify this, if I may.
Oh, direction.
Because rather than giving Robert direction, I'll take care of this. Not that Robert's done it wrong by any means, he's done a great job. But just because we're having the conversation, I'll take it upon myself to take care of this. Which is to contact H.R. Green, one, to see if they will release Fleming and Wells from the contract with H.R. Green so that we can negotiate directly with them. Two, is there a thirty percent in, fee on their annual salary if we negotiate with them outside of H.R. Green? Three, have H.R. Green come as well and present other candidates?
I, I don't think they can do that, I think that would be the conflict.
That would be the conflict with Tri-View.
But I heard somebody say they wanted a.
No, just the representative from H.R. Green.
Yeah, I, I, I think for us to ask them over the phone, hey, you have this, will, will you?
We just want him to talk about the two candidates you want.
I think that's not the best way to find out and he still wants these other candidates, but.
So, you want, I don't have his name in front of me.
Dave Sednallik?
The rep from H.R. Green, the two candidates. And then do you want Mr. Foreman here as well?
He came down last time, that's a long drive.
I don't think.
Okay, so we'll ask those three gentlemen to come back at the next meeting and talk about the interim town manager contract. Is that right?
I support, in agreements on that is the direction.
So, we're going to be negotiating in the meeting then, um, what?
Well, based on, I would say, based on this contract, maybe, I don't.
Or do we want to negotiate? I mean, do we want to set up a meeting?
To negotiate.
I'm not comfortable waiting another two weeks either, though, I mean, this is getting insane.
To set up a meeting.
I'm, I'm, I'm willing to, to go forward and negotiate for you guys.
If you would be up to a special meeting or something like that, I mean, they're going to have a date or anything like that, but.
Or if they're available.
Or if they're available.
But if, and, and again, if the negotiations, I'm still going to stand to my initial comments of put these two, if they come up, to sit with them and.
Are you willing to do that, Ron, I'm willing to do that, are you willing to do that? Are you willing to do that with me?
I've heard two new trustees, you.
Oh, referring to when you have discussion.
Yes, sir.
Special meeting?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying, special meeting?
No, no, if we want to expedite this and then we get two of our trustees in front of them to sit at the, the table with each one and go.
And we can go to them so they don't have to come here.
And then they can come right back to us and we're done.
Yeah, my, my skin's going to be tight in the next few weeks, um, so, let me know with the time, yeah, I'm willing as long as it works out with my skin.
Me too, I'm willing also.
Let's find out contract constraints for those individuals through H.R. Green and their availability. And then if you'll put that in an email to the board, then we can give you feedback on the next step.
Which makes sense.
Contract constraints, the two individuals.
Is there any, even an opportunity to negotiate any more?
Availability, sorry, I think. I'll take care of that probably two minutes.
Consider this step close?
Yeah, sure.
Next item on the agenda, public comments for items, not on the agenda. Public items will be limited to three minutes. Any comments from the public, Ms. Hayes?
Carrie Hayes, Charlie's Chamber of Commerce, um, I think you guys all know this and some of you, yes, and some will be there, but this is more for people doing this, something, do you? Oh, okay, um, on Monday, next Monday, is our candidate forum. And so, we do this all the time, whenever there is a forum because we just feel like it's a great idea for the public to be able to get a chance to meet all the candidate, candidates, get a sense of the candidates, it's not a debate. It is just questions and answers, as all of you guys have been through it yourselves, then you know what it's like. Um, it's just for the public to get an idea of who they might like to support. It will be recorded, I do not know if it's going to be live or not, um, we're still working on that, but if it's not live, at least it will be available afterwards for people to watch. And so, that will be Monday, October eighth, from six to eight, at Big Red, um, one forty-six Jefferson Street. And I would like to thank our moderator, Kevin Capus, who has done it. This is probably like his sixth time, I think, that he has done this. He comes up with questions, he moderates everything. And then, um, we probably will definitely have time for some questions from the audience also. So, we're just looking forward to doing it again and hopefully most people will be there.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, board authorizations. Any authorization items we can just, any authorization.
I would say I just, I, I thought about addressing it earlier in the, the consent agenda approval. I thought this probably the, the best time to do it, since it's an opportunity for discussion. What I've noticed over probably the past month, two months or so, um, with the meeting minutes, there appears to be, I know we had a summary, then we went to a really extensive version of our, our meeting minutes, more comprehensive of all the dialogue and, and statements made, especially by, by the seated board. It seems that we're kind of dwindling back towards a more minimized or summarized meeting minutes and I want to remind everybody and myself, I mean, this is our, our legal record of our meetings, not the audio, not the video. When, when people are looking back at what this board did ten years from now, they're looking at the meeting minutes. What I would like to see is us revert back to what we had going for a good year, year and a half of some more comprehensive minutes. And again, it's not, you know, any, anyone's fault or anything like that. I think it's important that we are as comprehensive as possible, especially in times like this, with topics like this, that we have a full record of what's being said. You know, for example, the minutes from the last meeting where we were discussing the, the one point eight million dollar loan, we had almost verbatim, um, public comments listed, uh, but no specific trustee comments as far as why individuals were voting, the way that they were voting on a, on a particular item. So, I'd like to see us back to more comprehensive, doesn't necessarily have to be every single word, but, um, we need to tune it in a little.
Does the board feel that's necessary, there are recordings available online for those?
Yes.
I'm just saying from a legal requirement, though, those audios not required to be kept.
Right, and I think having more elaboration on the minutes, especially after looking at the nineteen ninety-nine, wow, that was just incredibly comprehensive and fantastic, very clear and understandable. I would like to see us get more in tune with something like that.
Another volatile time in our, our community's history, nineteen ninety-nine. Another volatile time in our community's history, nineteen ninety-nine.
Any other board authorizations?
I just had one, Mr. Mayor, listening to Mr. Tharnish when he was, we had our budget meeting, and something he hit home was down on the lake and his vision and his goals for some things he wants to do down there and asking for security and what have you. And I'd like to get on the agenda for the board to maybe discuss, just a food for thought. What if we had a gate there, you paid your five bucks, you went in, when you go out, but at nighttime it's closed and what have you? It generates some revenue to be proactive, preventative maintenance, what have you? Again, you know, that's, it's a gift for people to come and see that and it's just an idea. Just an idea.
Sounds like a good one.
To make a community amenity, a pay amenity?
I'm sorry. I'm not sure what you're saying.
Maybe I didn't understand.
Just in a way, what I'm saying is hypothetically, you go down a monument lake, you put your five dollars in your credit card, let's say it's five dollars, gate opens, you're down the lake having a good time, generates some revenue for maintenance and new features at the lake, but also at nighttime, gates down, it's closed, people can't be coming in, which might minimize any, you know, genane again, so to speak. It's just an idea. It's just an idea. I know we've invested a lot and I know we want to invest a lot more, so, you know, I think visitors are probably not even blank.
Any other board authorization items?
What about discussion on where we are with the RFPs for the attorney?
Yes.
Yes. From the board's direction, I extended the invitation through October fifth, and I've heard from three other attorneys that had responded before then-
Great.
-that will respond, so Friday, at five, and I would have, I'm expecting to have three more that I would send to use if I give you a total five.
When did that board authorization come in? I don't recall us.
It was an email. I'm sorry, it's an email trail.
So it wasn't a board authorization?
I'm sorry, I said that wrong. It was just an email trail saying, what do you want me to do? Because what do you want me to do? And because the timeline was short, you know, some of the people, just like I heard from one of the people today, that Monday night was a problem and they had to go to their firm and see who might be available for Monday night. And they didn't find an attorney that was available, so they will be responding, you know. Linda Mishaus firm, wouldn't be Linda, of course, but, you know, she said they were looking at it again to find an attorney that could meet the requirements.
Can we add an agenda item for the next meeting to pick one of those?
Wouldn't you want to interview?
I would say have them come and then maybe, I mean, I don't know, if we do a, would that be an executive discuss personnel and pros and cons of both and then come out and see if we want to narrow down? I mean, an item, and we can always amend if it's not timely. I'd like to see something, we're planning on taking action on this date.
I will put on the next agenda, I will ask attorneys if they're going to be present on that Monday. I'll ask the ones, the two that have sent in and the other three. They send them in, I'll say, can be available Monday the fifteenth to talk to the board.
Did that work, Trustee Elliott? I know it was your topic, so.
Sure.
I know action is probably what we're all thinking, so.
It would be nice to have.
Wouldn't it?
Yeah. So a follow-on to that, we need a code of ethics. We've never finalized or the revised one. And we definitely, as soon as we get an attorney on board, that's something that we've got to come to agreement on. This board needs it.
We had the code of ethics, but we were looking for the, what was the rules of procedure? Is what?
That's what I meant.
Trustee Medlic has said, yeah, absolutely.
Because we're missing that. It can be annoying when I ask about it.
I'd like to review that code of ethics. I don't think I've ever seen it really.
I don't know that I ever got.
It was passed.
Was it passed?
It was passed. It was, I think, the last meeting of the previous board. I think.
I think I'm with the mayor. I don't-
I was thinking we should draw it forward and there were still questions and she was trying to get answers.
Yeah, I don't think we-
I think we did multiple versions.
There were, yeah, red lines and-
But you're correct, and it's one thing to get too noisy, because I mentioned Robert's rules of order, and she's like, your board needs basically rules of order. Because some of Robert's rules may have four or five examples in there and your board has picked what examples they want to use, so.
Yeah.
We can put that on the agenda.
Well, I'd simply say we wait for the seventh member to join us and we can hone in on that.
You're only a month away now.
Yeah, yeah.
But attorneys, I will ask the attorneys if they can be here on, and I'll have, yeah, be a resolution for the attorneys, for you to pick and just leave it blank. See if you all can select an attorney at that time. If not, we'll just go to the next meeting.
Any other board authorization items? Do we have any board of trustee comments?
I just want to briefly say what I've said many times. This is not easy, doing any of this. The decisions that we have, each of us carry one vote. That's all that we have the power to do, policymaking. There's no right or wrong vote. Every individual up here, I do believe and I respect the votes of, whether it's in alignment with mine or not, I do believe everybody up here is voting in a way that they feel best represents the residents of this community. I just want to remind the community, want to remind this board that this isn't personal, this isn't this side versus that side, this isn't right versus wrong. There is no right or wrong. We each have one vote. You vote your conscience based on the information that you're provided. And respect is the word that both Trustee Bornstein and Trustee Elliott highlighted, and I think we need to respect the votes of everybody, whether it's in agreement with yours or not. So, thank you.
If I may, speaking of information, you had requested an attorney come and review the famous two-way SD fund. I did contact Mr. Pelz, and he would be willing to come to a meeting. I sent him all of the ordinances and everything I've got from eighty-nine forward on the sales tax for water. So he's reviewing that right now, and when he's finished reviewing it, he'll let me know when he's available and he'll come down and we'll have that discussion.
Would it be helpful for me to clarify my main question further-
Probably so.
-and provide that to you? You can provide it with the full board, certainly. But to give him the opportunity to maybe do the research that he may need, rather than putting one on the spot and him not having an answer?
I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
You know, our elements, you know, if we can get this done ahead of time, it saves everyone time and in this case, saves money.
Yeah. Let me fine tune that and send it to you. And again, in transparency, I ask if you could share that with the full board as you're communicating.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other trustee comments?
I just have a brief comment. Just in listening to things tonight and receiving emails from the town staff that are reply-alls for equality of information and your responses to the board, thank you for taking the time